The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the rope.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldt, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Krusen, President Reed, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Krusen, nineteen present.
Quorum being present, unless everyone in the chambers rise for prayer, we will be led in prayer today by Reverend James A. Powell of Greater Progressive Missionary
Let us bow in prayer. How would Heavenly Father, we just thank you once more again that you allow us to be present. Now Lord, wish that thy will be done.
Through these aldermen, through the mayor, the police department.
Lord, through all that make up this assembly, the president of this alderman board, wish you to give them guidance. Lord, we always have needed you, but we sure do need you now. Wish you to let St. Louis be an example to the rest of the world for doing what is right. And Lord, we just ask you to go with each and every one in their decision making, not only hear Lord from everyone that make up this city, even to the one that collect the trash, the one that, whatever their job is, Lord, for we all need you and we cannot get along without you. So Lord, we looking to you today, the author and finisher of our faith. In the precious name of Jesus, wish all these blessing and for Christ's name sake, we pray, amen.
Amen. That was a great prayer. We have a rare malfunction in the mics this morning. That's our first, after thirteen years of being here, that's the first time I've seen that. Somebody from the communications division, if you guys can come and swap this out, that'd be great so that we can continue. Just the cape. Yeah. Yeah. Perfect, and we're back. Thanks, guys. Hour's fine. Yeah. Yeah, thank you, thank you. Let's give Reverend Powell a round of applause and thank him for his prayer today. I think it was a great opening prayer. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President and esteemed colleagues. I'd like to have for my special guest today Senator Harry Kennedy, committee man from the Fourteenth Ward, Recorder of Deeds Jennifer Florida, Demetrius Alfred from International Association of Firefighters Local 73 that is housed in the beautiful Fourteenth Ward in the shadow of the Bevo Mill.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of board. I'd like to have as my honored guest this morning, Mr. Chris Pickle and Lee Ray Grant with AT&amp;T.
Alderman from the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest Mark Dalton, Jeff Hans, and Todd Hake of the Carpenter's District Council.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to have, she's here actually to interview me for whatever reason today from Hairston College, is Kiars.
Yes, welcome aboard. Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, resident of Twenty-Sixth Ward and former comptroller, Ferris Jones. Thank you.
Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest Mary from your office and Jerome from the Treasurers office. Life's Galaxy.
Alderman, Alderman from the first.
I'm sorry, I don't know who uses this mic. Mr. President and members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest, the licensed collector, the City of St. Louis Mavis Thompson.
Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I would like to have as my special guest today David Holmes, the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, and Anthony Lancia with AGC.
Alderman from the ninth.
I was trying to trick you.
I know.
Mr. President and members of the board, I'd like to have for my honored guest today Ronnie Hour, and he's on this side.
You guys both moved on us today. Alderman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today Mr. Anthony Lancia with the Associated General Contractors, who has agreed to watch Jack, Evan, and Caleb for me since my babysitter didn't show up.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? We also are very honored to have with us today Donna Cobal. Donna, could you please stand? Donna is the head of Forest Relief, and Donna has so generously provided five hundred trees to be planted throughout the St. Louis region, led by the Board of Aldermen us. This weekend, they'll be planted Sunday. So we have organizations all over the region that have called and ordered trees through our board, and we cannot thank Forest Relief enough for what they're doing. It is a healing process that's taking place in wake of the Ferguson shooting. So again, Donna, thank you so much for what you've done, and we cannot thank you for all that you're doing with Forest Relief, not just in the St. Louis metro area, but all across country. Let's give Donna a round of applause and thanks Forest If any of the other aldermen would like to get involved in that process, let us know so that we can work with you in delivering trees this weekend. Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. It's October third, falls in the air, the season of change. Some things do change. In 1955, Rock Hudson was on the cover of Life magazine, the country's most eligible bachelor. Some things don't change. Pumpkins are everywhere, the Rams are an unknown entity, the Cards are in the playoff, and we're introducing a charter change bill today. Thank you.
We also, we also have Jason Hudson, he's an intern with Dave. Jason, could you stand up and see out here? Oh, there he is, Jason. Thank you for joining the board. Let's give him a round of applause. Alderman from the seventeenth, recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes of the September nineteenth, 2014 meeting.
Move by Alderman from the seventeenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes.
We dispense with line items seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We dispense with line items eight through ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 143, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service and the Board of Investment and Apportionment authorizing an eighth supplemental appropriation in the total amount of $519,300 from the Airport Development Fund into the Airport Schedule F CIP project for the payment of costs for work and services authorized therein and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 144, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Investment and Apportionment establishing, authorizing a public works improvement program at Lambert Airport at a total estimated cost of $971,978 to be extended for the payment of costs for emergency work and services authorized herein and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 145, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Investment and Apportionment authorizing a supplemental appropriation and set apart in a total amount of $1,078,022 from the Airport Development Fund to the annual budget for current expenses of the government and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 146, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Comptroller, and the Board of Investment and Apportionment making certain findings with respect to the transfer of $2, 50,000 of excess money that the city, the owner and operator of Lambert Airport intends to transfer from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Development Fund containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 147, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its recommended and approved by the Board of, approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Investment and Apportionment establishing and authorize-
Can we have some order?
Establishing and authorizing a public works improvement program at Lambert Airport at a total estimated cost of $30 million, authorizing an initial appropriation in total amount of $13,287,271 from the Airport Development Fund to be expended for the payment of costs for work and services authorized herein and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 148, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its recommended by the Airport Commission, Board of Public Service and the Board of Investment and Apportionment authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into an executed agreement and contract of sale between St. Louis, the owner and operator of Lambert Airport and North Park Partners LLC, providing for the sale of approximately 6.475 acres of property owned by St. Louis for the sum of $225,000, and authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to enter into an executed quitclaim deed and containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 149, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its recommended by the Airport Commission, the Board of Investment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into an executed dual customs agreement between the city, the owner and operator of Lambert Airport and Brownsville International Air Cargo Incorporated, memorializing the city's and BIAC's mutual understandings and commitments to each other for the cooperation to obtain approval for establishing and developing dual customs cargo facility at the airport and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 150, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its recommended and approved by the Board of Investment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute seven on-airport passenger vehicle rental concession agreements at Lambert Airport between the city and the following multiple concessionaires containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 151, sponsored by Alderman Young and Alderman Davis, and authorizing ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city a proposed amendment to the Charter of the city to reorganize the Office of the Recorder of Deeds, which exercised traditional county functions. The proposed amendment incorporates into the Charter the present office of the Recorder of Deeds and reorganizes the number, kinds, manner of selection, terms, salaries, powers, duties, and functions of said office, provides opportunity for the present staff of the office proposed for reorganization to become employees of the city with their individual seniority and compensation unaffected and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 152, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2,700 Henrietta and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 153, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2,804 through 208, and 2,814 through 20 South Compton, and 3,151 through 53 Halliday, and 3,152 Magnolia and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 154, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2,925 Lemp and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 155, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3,453 Wisconsin and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 156, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2,615 January and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 157, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and on its approving amended blighting study and a redevelopment plan for amended Hyde Park Scattered Sites Five redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 158, sponsored by Alderman Young and on its approving a redevelopment plan for 1011 Olive. Board Bill 159, sponsored by Alderman Davis and on its approving a redevelopment plan for 3828 through 30 Folsom and 3826 through 32 McReed. Board Bill 160, sponsored by Alderman Young and on its recommended by the Board of Public Service, establishing a public works improvement project for downtown traffic signal intersection improvements, Broadway Seventh Street, Chestnut Market Street involving new traffic signal equipment, vehicle detection, and pedestrian upgrades around Keener Plaza and containing a public works emergency clause. Board Bill 161, sponsored by Alderman Flowers and on its authorizing execution of intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city and Cary Avenue Community Improvement District and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
Legislation Committee, Board Bill 151, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill 160, to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 161, to the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bills 143, 144, 145, 146, 147, 148, 149, and 150, to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills 153, 154, 155, 156, 157, and 159, to the Housing Committee, Board Bills 152 and 158. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following Board Bills were reported on the Streets Committee, Board Bill 89, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and on its directing the Director of Streets to close, barricade, or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Maple at the East Curve Line of Clarendon containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 90, sponsored by Alderman Young and on its authorizing directing the Street Commissioners to take all necessary actions to honorarily designate Seventh Street as Shannon's Way. Board Bill 96, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and on its authorizing directing the Street Commissioners to take all necessary actions to honorarily designate Providence Place between Minnesota and Michigan to Napstein Place. Board Bill 113, sponsored by Alderman Cone and on its recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on the most easterly portion of Compton beginning from Facen and extending southwardly to a northern line of East West Alley and City Block 2,855 adjacent to 424 Facen. Board Bill 114, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and on its recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on the north-south alley and City Block 4781 South bounded by Children's Place, Taylor, Scott, and Euclid. That's the extent of our second readings.
With dispens for line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill 97, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its approved, on its recommended and approved by the Board of Investment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the Lambert Airport management and operation of parking facility services agreement AL 267 between the city and ABM Parking Services Incorporated and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 98, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Investment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute and deliver the First Amendment to the intergovernmental agreement by and between the city and by state development agency concerning the parities, cooperative effort to operate a regional interoperable public safety communication system containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 115, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its recommended and approved by the Board of Investment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the Lambert-St. Louis Banking Concession Agreement AL 278 between the city and U.S. Bank National Association granting to the concessionaire the right and privilege to operate and manage banking concession at the airports containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 132, sponsored by Alderman Villa, Alderman Ortman, and Alderman Young and on its recommended by the Board of Public Service, authorizing and directing the president of the Board of Public Service to enter into eight Missouri highways and Transportation Commission supplemental agreements for highway rail crossing improvements by and between the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, the City of St. Louis, and Union Pacific Railroad Company for various safety improvements through eight public highway rail grade crossings in the city and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 90, Board Bill 99, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and Alderman Ingracia and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Magnolia, Oregon, Ohio Scattered Sites redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 100, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan dated for, a redevelopment plan for 3,304 Shenandoah and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 101, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3,130 Ohio and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 102, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5,624 Magnolia and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 103, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4,019 Magnolia and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 104, sponsored by Alderman Howard and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan 5320 Brannan and 5214 Walsh and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 105, sponsored by Alderman Young and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2340 South 11th Street and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 106, sponsored by Alderman Young and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1041 Shenandoah containing a severability clause. Board Bill 107, sponsored by Alderman Florida and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3,904 Hartford and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 108, sponsored by Alderman Florida and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3,804 and 3,822 Humphrey and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 110, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5,132 Daggett and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 111, sponsored by Alderman Cone and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5,103 through 2005 Wicklow and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 116, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4,321 through 25 Manchester and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 118, sponsored by Alderman Young and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1409 Missouri and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 122, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3,501 California and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 123, sponsored by Alderman Young and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2,117 Russell and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 127, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4,151 through 53 Cleveland and 4,012 Flat and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 128, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3,854, 3,858, 3,860 Shenandoah and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 129, sponsored by Alderman Cone and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5,201 through 2003 Virginia and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 135, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3,884 Fairview and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 136, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3,518 Utah and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for perfection and consent.
Move by Alderman from the seventeenth, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the fourteenth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. With dispens for line item sixteen, third reading consent.
Board Bills 112, 117, 119, 120, 121, and 130.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on motion for third reading consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for third reading consent.
Move by Alderman from the seventeenth, second by Alderman from the fourteenth, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the rope.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldt, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Krusen, President Reed, Alderman Moore, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Arnoldt, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Cone, Alderman Carter, 24 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderman from the seventeenth, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Dispense with line item eighteen. Report of enrollment committee.
Board Bills 112, 117, 119, 120, 121, and 130.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to the end Move for adoption, our courtesy resolution calendar, entertain a second on that. Second by Alderman from the twenty-sixth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
We have none.
Second.
We have none.
Miss Lanes, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Wednesday, Housing Committee meeting at 8:30 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. That's on Wednesday. Friday, full board meeting, 10 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcement.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the eighth.
Members of the board, this weekend will be truly a beautiful weekend.
Members of the board, this weekend will be truly a beautiful weekend in the city of St. Louis. We have two events going on in contiguous areas. One would be the Best of the Missouri Marketplace at the Missouri Botanical Garden, where they'll be showcasing wares and items for sale from local vendors throughout the state of Missouri. But most particularly proud of is the Historic Shaw Art Fair, will run Saturday and Sunday. Each day, all day long, we'll be showcasing 127 juried artists of all varieties, woodwork, jewelry, painting, photography, phenomenal artwork on display, very reasonably priced. But you'll also have the opportunity to view and look at all of the historic homes and the Renaissance that we've had in the 8th Ward as you use your Visa card. So it's a beautiful weekend, come spend it with us in the Shaw neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further announcements? Alderman from the 9th.
Members of the board, Saturday is the Neighborhood Benton Parks Last Concert in the Benton Park. It's also their chalk art and what they call the Taste of Benton Park. So a lot of the restaurants supply food and then, you know, you can come in and get a variety of taste. The chalk art starts in the morning, and that's where artists come down and they get a block of sidewalk and do the chalk art, which is always a beautiful thing, and it amazes me, you know, what people can put down. And then we pray that it doesn't rain for a couple of days so people can get by and see it. But they do take pictures, so it is safe. But it's Saturday, if you want to come by and volunteer to help set up, I think that starts at 9 o'clock and the day will be full. Thank you.
And Alderman is right, that chalk art is amazing. So if you haven't had an opportunity to see some of the things they put down with chalk, you have to get by there and see it, it's amazing. Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The Legislative Committee will meet Monday, October 20th, at 3:30 to hear Board Bill 151.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I do have two other honored guests that are residents of the 26th Ward. We have Ms. Hattie Weaver, she's an instructor at Harris Stowe, and she's also with her granddaughter, who also lives in the 26th Ward, Gabrielle McIntosh.
Welcome, Ms. Weaver, welcome. Alderman from the 9th, 19th.
I'm sorry, I can't hear myself. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So I want to just reiterate, Sister Strut is tomorrow morning, and I'd like for everybody that is willing to come and make a contribution, show recognition to it, and even if you can't walk, be there. It starts at 8 o'clock with the speakers and all of that. It will be a soldier's memorial. I also wanted to recognize Sister, I mean, I wanted to recognize Jazz at the Bistro and thank David Stewart for his contribution for that. And lastly, I wanted to recognize the Urban League for all its efforts in working with the Ferguson situation, but also highlighting and identifying the entire region for all the things that we need to do to make it a better place for everyone who lives here. And our president of the Urban League has been very instrumental, even in D.C., in making some of those decisions. So thank you very much.
Any, Alderman from the 14th.
I would like to announce that Oasis International is hosting a Bosnian festival in beautiful Christie Park. It's open to everybody, they're going to have food, they're going to have some soccer celebrities, so come on down to the beautiful Christie Park and indulge with the Bosnian Heritage Festival. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I want to send a cheap plug out to my mother-in-law, happy birthday, Melvia Whitfield.
Let's give her a round of applause for her birthday. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? I also want to just remind everybody, next week is the annual employee picnic, or employee, you know, luncheon, that the Board of Aldermen we host every year. We started it five years ago, and the employees, they look so forward to it. It's one opportunity a year that we can thank them en masse, and we normally feed 700 or 800 employees, and every year it gets bigger and bigger and bigger. We have one main sponsor that was with us last year that's coming back again this year. So the menu, for the most part, is set because, you know, it's expensive to feed 800 to 900 employees, right? And it is very expensive to feed that many people, so we rely on a lot of donations. So my office through Mary and others have secured a ton of donations, everything from napkins to all the paperwares, to the food, and things of that nature. The last piece that we must cover as members of the Board of Aldermen would be, you know, soda, fruit, and a couple things like that that we have to give. And to do that, it requires all of us to give nearly around $40 apiece. So think about it, we get to feed nearly 900 city employees, and some of the bigger guys go through line two or three times. I know I do. I know I would. But we can do that for $40 apiece. So I'm asking people to, you know, dig deep and give the $40. I know some people have given more, I know Joe has given, he gave $60, and some people have given even more than that. Joe Vaquaro took Mary out and took her to the store and bought chips and everything. So whatever you can do, let's do it, and let's make sure that the employees are recognized and they're really looking forward to the Aldermen coming down there, spending some time with them, and serving them. You don't know how much it means to them. So they're excited about it, let's make sure that they have a great day next week. So if you have any further questions or anything, I'll be in the office, just come by and say hey to me, or catch Mary or anybody else. Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we excuse the Alderman from the 20th Ward.
Alderman from the 20th. It's been moved by Alderman from the 17th, second by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the 17th, you make, recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we adjourn till next Friday, October the 10th.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, second by Alderman from the 11th. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned.